Everyone, to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am Barb Lewis, President, and I have with me Gary Merrill, fellow Commissioner, and our Administrator Tracy Davies, our Deputy Administrator Don Houston, and we have our clerks Jennifer Waller Haven and Brandy. We can begin.
Resolution number two-five dash three-one, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So move.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton is absent today. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We do not have any public comment today. That brings us to item number three, resolution number two-five dash three-two, in the matter of approving the purchase orders, then announce certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR zero-one-two-two, memo transfers in batch number MT APR zero-one-two-two, and procurement card payments in batch number PC APR zero-one-two-two.
So move.
Oh, sorry. Second.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-two. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash three-three, in the matter of approving travel expense request.
So move.
Second discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-three. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash three-four, in the matter of submitting to the electors an additional tax levy in excess of the ten million limitation for the Delaware County District Library RC sections seven, five-seven-zero-five point zero-three and five-seven-zero-five point two-three.
So move.
Second discussion.
Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Merrill, thank you for the opportunity to be here today, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, maybe a little louder if you could just say your name.
I am, excuse me, I'm Brian Howard, Director of the Delaware County District Library. Sorry about that. And with me, I also have some staff members from the Delaware County District Library. We have Molly Myers-LeBeidey, our Deputy Director, we have Angie Grosenbacher, our Fiscal Officer, we have Nicole Fowles, our Communications Manager, and we have Sutton Durfee, our Deputy Fiscal Officer. We have the resolution before you, resolution of necessity for us to go on the May ballot, requesting a new levy for the Delaware County residents of a fifteen-year levy for one mil. We have had, I also want to thank you for giving us the opportunity, we've been able to meet with all of you individually over the last week or two, to speak with you about this, and given us the opportunity to kind of lay out where we have been as an institution and where we're looking to go as an institution. So this is something we do not take very lightly, asking the taxpayers of this county to pass a new levy, but the services that we will provide from there, from this money, will help restore a lot of the services that we have had to cut in the last two years, and to provide a lot of the services that the community has requested and asked from us. I've been on the job for a little over two years. When I first came into the job, we had to make some substantial financial cuts at the end of twenty twenty-two and early twenty-three, including drastic cuts to our operating hours, materials, programs, just from top to bottom. We've tried to sustain that for the last two years, but, you know, everything is going up in price and we, our revenue is pretty static. This led, our property taxes account for, excuse me, about sixty-five percent of our total income, the other thirty-five percent comes from state PLF money. That money was down in twenty twenty-four. We get one-point-seven percent of the state's general revenue fund, so that money is based on the receipts that the state gets every year. And that money was down in twenty twenty-four, and there is a new biennium budget coming up, Governor DeWine's last biennium budget here coming of the summer, and we'll see where we stand on that. It's always, you know, we're on pins and needles waiting to see what the biennium budget looks for when it comes to public libraries. So I will entertain any questions, comments you have, but thank you once again for taking the time with meeting with us all individually to talk with you about this.
Could you mention the, the amount of money, the extra amount of money people would have to pay per one hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely. It would be thirty-five dollars per one hundred thousand.
Okay, all righty. Commissioner Merrill?
Yeah, Brian, you will take a seat, because my comments will be fairly, and if you have a comment, you can come back.
Please call me back up if you need anything.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting a lot of talk to this, and I, first of all, I believe strongly in libraries. I'm an avid reader, my wife's an avid reader. In fact, I took photos this morning of our books. My wife goes out and buys the books, and she keeps every book she ever buys. When we got married, we ended up with a lot of duplicate books, and my book got donated, and she kept hers, so, where we had duplicate copies. Currently, I have a book in my car that is a religious book. I have a book in my basement right now, it's appropriate, because it has to do with O'Reilly's book on the presidency, which is outstanding book, I encourage everybody to read it. If you read it, you're gonna find there's a pretty bad presence in the eighteen hundreds. So that's just an editorial comment. What makes this difficult for me today is things that we were asked to do as Commissioners that are perfunctory. In other words, we're asked to vote affirmatively, but to know, but it's just a perfunctory vote, because we're required to. And those kind of things, frankly, the legislature should remove. If our vote doesn't mean anything, we should not be asked to cast a vote. And that's wrong, and I think we've had that conversation, and I think you probably agree with it. And that's not the fault of anybody in this room, that's the fault of our legislators, and I had an opportunity to talk to CCL earlier this week, it's something we need to correct, and hopefully we will. A little bit about the history, how we got here. Back eight years ago, roughly, the library approaches about a fifteen-year levy, and we expressed some concerns about that, but again, our vote is perfunctory, and we were, we were given the impression that that fifteen-year levy would get us through fifteen years without any additional request from the voters. Well, obviously, that has not happened. I believe that the former leadership, and I believe that the former board did not do their job properly, and because of that, the money's not there today. I know the cost of that new library was roughly double, I think that was the number I heard, of what was expected. I'm not gonna get into specifics or details, but put you way behind the eight ball right out of the box. And I understand that and respect that, but it does make me less frustrated by that. The, and then about two, three years ago, I don't have the exact date, but we know there was a change in the fiscal officer for the library. And we, as the Commissioners, asked and directed our Administrator to inquire what's all that all about? And we were not given, let's say, good information, and Brian, you explain why that occurred, and I'm not gonna go into that detail either, but I think we had a right to know that information, because questions are, was it misuse of money, was it not doing the job correctly, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, be one of a dozen reasons. But we felt, as Commissioners representing the taxpayers in this county, that was reasonable, a reasonable request, and for whatever reasons, we were never able to get reasonable answers. And I know that when the library was built, I believe an extra floor was added, and it just inflationary costs that nobody could anticipate, and all those issues added considerably to the cost of that building. And I do believe there were costs that could or should be eliminated, that have not been. I'm not gonna go into specifics on that either. I just want to emphasize, our current board and the current leadership of the library, I have confidence and faith in. I think they're doing it the right way, but I cannot say that about the board that was in effect at that time, or the leadership at that time. I don't think good decisions were made, or good evaluation of the issues were made, and we are where we are. But, so none of this is a reflection of the current board. I think the current board's trying to do the job correctly. And the dilemma, if my vote counted for anything, which it doesn't today, I would likely be supported because of that. I believe the current board, current leadership is trying to head in the right direction. But I am irritated by the fact that my vote today is irrelevant, it's not anyone's fault in this room, it's the state's fault. Either make our votes count for something, or take it away from us. But I do have a request, and I think it's a reasonable request. Fifteen-year levies takes away all accountability on our voters. We said that eight years ago, and I'm gonna say it again today. Our voters have a right to be able to look at whatever the organization is, today we're talking about the library. Our voters have a right to be able to look and judge and evaluate whether or not that those dollars are being provided through a levy or being done well, effectively, and when we do fifteen years, that's all taken away. And that's wrong. If our vote had counted for anything eight years ago, I think we would have been much more specific on that issue, although I know we talked about it to some degree. You guys, many of you weren't here, and I don't, there's no one in this room to, I'm holding accountable, responsible, I'm just frustrated. But I'm gonna ask this, fifteen-year levies are wrong, way too long. You guys got a week and a half, February fifth, I believe is the deadline, for the Board of Elections for the May elections. I'm gonna ask that your board meet and have a conversation about making the length of this levy equal the current fifteen-year levy, and then at that point, have one levy that going forward, healthy for less than fifteen years, moving forward. I do not believe that's an unreasonable request. I believe that represents accountability that my responsibilities the taxpayers in this county deserve, and it gets us back in a position where we have a better opportunity to support the library, evaluate the job the library's doing, and I realize you've already voted on it, so you'd have to re-meet and, and revote, I don't have a problem with that, special sessions are certainly doable. I can't require it, but I want the voters in this county to hear this as they make an evaluation in May and cast their vote. And I hope you'll at least have that meeting, have that conversation, and in my, the chair I sit in, come to what I believe is the right conclusion. Those are my comments, and I hope you appreciate and understand. We need to trust the voters, and it shows a complete lack of trust in the voters when you put a levy out there for fifteen years. That's wrong. Thank you.
Yes. Director Howard, would you like to, or anyone like to respond? That would be great.
Thank you much, very much for those comments, Commissioner Merrill, and I understand the frustration with some of the state legislator items. We've had this discussion, and I think we see the same way when it comes to things of that nature. A couple responses. One is, you know, I'm not a fan of a fifteen-year levy either, but based on the hand, the cards that we've been dealt, this is the best solution moving forward, and I agree with you, that is a long time to go without the taxpayers taking a look at it and being able to vote again on it. With this current fifteen-year levy, though, there will be that break where in seven, it will now be every seven years when one of these levies comes up, so there will not be the full fifteen-year waiting period. So the next levy, if this one is passed, the twenty thirty-three, the first levy will come up, and if the public, if we have not done our due diligence, the public has every right to vote it down. That's on us. We have the onus of making sure, it's taxpayers' funds, we have to be responsible, we have to be transparent, and if we don't do our jobs, they absolutely should fail it. That, that's the responsibility we have in the positions that we are. We have to be good stewards of the public's money. So just to respond to that aspect of it, there would not be the full fifteen-year wait. We would have a levy coming up approximately every seven years at that point.
Basically, fifteen-year levies that are gonna leapfrog each other. The one in thirty-three, if you did for another fifteen, it'd be, so...
And I was, I'm sorry to interrupt, I didn't mean to, my apologies. My, but the other side of that is, is quite frankly, where we are in Delaware County compared to our peers in the area, you know, we're falling behind in library land. So many people in our county go to Westerville, go to Worthington, go to Columbus, because we don't have the hours, we don't have the services. We're losing out on that. They have permanent levies. They have permanent levies. Go look at Westerville and go look at Worthington. I, whether that's right or wrong, but that's why they're thriving. I get the accountability, and it is on us. If I don't do my job, I need to be voted out. If we, as an institution, do not do well with the steward's money, then they need to vote down our levies. But we are growing as a county, we have a great relationship with our board, the administration, that is something that we have rebuilt over the last two and a half years, and I'm all about moving forward. We, we have to address the past, because the past got us here, but I cannot dwell on the past. I have to play with the cards I've been dealt and move forward, and that's what we intend to do and hope to do, and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Again, you, you weren't here.
I know, no, no.
And I'm not, you know, it's not, you know, it's not personal.
Absolutely not.
I would, my hope was, was, and still is, that the levy that expires in thirty thirty, twenty thirty-three, would then be combined, you'd have one levy that would be a different number, and going forward, not that people wouldn't support it, that was my point.
I know, no, no, I get it, I get it. And in twenty thirty-three, there, there can be a multitude of options on the table at that point. I mean, if we can reassess, much like, you know, I went back and watched the videos from twenty eighteen of these sessions, when Commissioner Benton had his concerns and addressed them, and he felt, you know, about the money, and he didn't think that full millage was needed. I appreciate that dialogue, I appreciate it. I don't know the conversations that were had behind closed doors with that administration and the Commissioners, I don't know what financials were provided. I can only speak to now and today. I know that in the last two years, our services have been drastically cut, our operating hours have been cut. I know that we have not asked the Delaware County residents for any new money since two thousand and eight.
As promised.
And in that, in that time, since we've asked for new money from two thousand and eight, we have built two new wonderful facilities in Orange Township and in Liberty Township. We went through two recessions, a pandemic, and at no point did we come back and ask for any new money. Now for us, when I came in, we made cuts to try to stabilize, stop the bleeding, we can't survive off that. And the, and the public has told us that they don't like our hours, they don't like the programs that have been cut, they don't like the outreach services that have been cut, they don't like the cuts to our digital, you know, digital materials. The community is telling us, and if, we're trying to provide what we can for this community. Like I said, with our peers in the area, we're lacking behind them. Worthington and Westerville, for the communities they serve, and us as Delaware County and the size that we serve, you know, they have bigger operating budgets, they have more circulations every year, they have more people coming in their doors than we do as a system. That shouldn't be happening in Delaware County. Our people should not be, we have everything we need in Delaware County, they should not be leaving to go to Frank County.
I didn't want to debate this.
No, I'm not debating, I'm sorry.
We had a great meeting the other day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, take all the time.
The only point I'm trying to make is bad decisions made by prior board, bad decisions made by prior leadership put us here.
Yep.
Not your fault, and because that you had to make cuts to be able to move forward with the library. And I'm a big fan of libraries, I, we sometimes went to trouble of commenting about, now we bought, my wife likes to buy her own books, read her own books, look at them, which, but everybody should have an opportunity to be able to go read and find the books they want to read. Last night, my friend, my son, we talked about, a couple weeks ago, about Grapes of Wrath. She'd never heard of the book, and I'm just standing in amazement. And I come from Oklahoma, so in Oklahoma, Grapes of Wrath is pretty personal. But somehow, the role you're playing, the role my wife and I played in getting this book in her hands, is important. It's unfortunate that people today do not have the same value that we place on this in some cases, and libraries are changing, providing new services. So I'm not condemning the current leadership, I am not condemning my, the current board, I'm pleased with both, from what I can see. My frustration is, we are out of balance because of bad decisions made, and you're forced to make tough decisions to get us back in balance. I just think our voters have, need for accountability, and, and that's all I'm asking for, and I don't think they get that with fifteen-year levies, and that's my point.
I respect that, thank you for that.
I told him a second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Merrill, thank you for the opportunity to come back up. Do you have questions?
Just wanna thank you, Director Howard, and then the Angie, Molly, I had a good meeting too with, with, with the leadership, staff leadership, and really appreciated that meeting, and became even more aware of what the problems were in the past, as Commissioner Merrill said, you know, we were kind of in the dark for a few years, or we would have spoken up, but, but now, and, and I read the services that you are gonna provide, one of the most important things I thought were the extended hours, but it's also for kids, and, and the importance is, as you mentioned, Commissioner Merrill, of, of the outreach, that, that you, you are doing outreach now, but you need to expand that outreach. So, so I, I do support the levy, I certainly understand Commissioner Merrill's point, though, fifteen years is way, is way too long. There will be a vote again in, in seven years.
Yes.
So, so anyway, I thank everyone for their hard work on this, and I...
Commissioners? Tracy Davies, Administrator, I just wanna thank Brian for, for his leadership, I appreciate his leadership at the library, and I know that he immediately stepped into his role and identified financial concerns and brought that immediately to the attention of his board, so credit to Brian and team for bringing that up. I did have an opportunity to speak, speak with Commissioner Benton about the levy, he couldn't be here today, and he asked that I convey the following message on his behalf. He says, "The justification for in use of a ten million dollar tax increase, which almost doubles their revenues, was not well explained, so I would not support this levy based on what I know at this point." Commissioner Benton also adds that he loves the library and he, and all that they do, but at this time, he does not support this significant tax increase. Thank you.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay, vote?
Vote on motion two-five dash three-four, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Item number six, resolution number two-five dash three-five, in the matter of approving a permit for the use of Delaware County facilities.
So move.
Second, sorry.
Discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jane Hawes, Director of Communications. We have before you a request for a permit by the Ohio EMS Chiefs Association to use room two-thirty-five at the Hayes Building, and we recommend your approval.
Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-five, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash three-six, in the matter of reappointing members to the Concordia Sioota Community Authority Board of Trustees.
So move.
Second discussion.
And this is a resolution to reappoint Tiffany Magg, who serves as our local government representative on this community authority board, and Robert Grant is also interested in being reappointed, and we recommend their approval.
Okay, and I thank them for their service. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-six, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Resolution number two-five dash three-seven, in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriations for the Recorders Office.
So move.
Second discussion.
Good morning, thank you for having me.
Good morning.
My name's Clancy Maloney Nelson, I'm the Chief Deputy at the Recorders Office, and we just needed to make a funds transfer to a different category to get some cabinetry that we need desperately. And that's all, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions? No. Vote please.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-seven, Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye, thank you.
Resolution number two-five dash three-eight, in the matter of declaring a public purpose and authorizing the use of Delaware County funds for the purchase of coffee, meals, refreshments, and other amenities, and approving a transfer of appropriations.
So move.
Second discussion, vote?
Vote on motion...
Oh, Dawn, did you wanna say something?
No, I honestly don't need to, it speaks for itself.
Okay.
They're grant funds from Subco, and this just authorizes the purchase of refreshments for the health fair and other wellness events that will be happening throughout twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-eight, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash three-nine, a resolution of necessity for purchase or lease of motor vehicles for the use of the Delaware County Facilities Management.
So move.
Second discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. This resolution of necessity is to replace three of our maintenance vans and one of the maintenance trucks. These vehicles are currently owned vehicles, so they'll go up on gov deals, and they're all, most of them are actually past their service life.
These are prior to our leasing.
Pardon me?
These are prior to our leasing.
Yes, they were prior to leasing, and actually, in the last couple of years, we've had difficulty in getting cargo vans because of coming out of COVID, the manufacturers, it was hard to get cargo vans, that's why we're replacing three. I think we'll have actually, I think we have two that are coming up on the end of their lease, two as well, but we'll...
You have a question I want to ask, are they, they are going to go out of service?
They are replacements, they are going out of service. One actually is already out of service, so, yes.
Very good.
Before we vote, I just wanna thank you, John, you've been pretty busy lately?
No, that's the best part.
And you have, you and your staff have done a great job clearing the sidewalks.
Thank you.
And...
Well, I haven't seen John doing that.
No, you don't.
Yes, he's, he's, he's kind of the conductor, and...
I will share that with the team, yes.
No, but I mean, just keeping the heat on, and all the things that you do, and I, I know we take a lot for granted.
It's all the things I oversee, I have a great team behind us, you know, that do an excellent job taking care of these buildings. It is a struggle at times, we've been lucky in this cold weather, we've had some, some difficulties keeping up, but they are on top of things.
Boy, how's, how's Bixby doing then, with the, with the cold and everything?
Actually, we haven't had too many problems out there, we had just minor things, so, yeah.
Oh, that's, that's great. Well, thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Vote on motion two-five dash three-nine, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash four-zero, in the matter of accepting a donation made to the Department of Job and Family Services.
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've gotta train you.
Yeah, I, I figured, my mom is somewhere else, that's all I said. So you make the motion then?
You're back with your books.
Did you make the motion?
Um, yes, I did.
And I'll second it.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob, thank you.
Good morning, Bob Anderson with Job and Family Services.
I've seen some looking guy come up here.
Thank you. This is accepting the donations for December that went to our foster children. We had six very generous community members in churches that donated a total of over twenty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
In the month of December, we had lower, we had actually eighteen people that donated over thirty-one thousand dollars. These, these are the donations over a thousand are required.
Wow, what, what do you spend them on then?
A lot of them are toys, we actually received ballet tickets that we could send foster families to as well, gift cards, toys... uh gift cards, toys, um and clothing.
Oh, that's great. That's, oh, that's wonderful.
Once again, people in Delaware County always seem to come up.
Yes.
Help out wherever they can.
Oh, that's great. Uh vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-40, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-41, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds and a supplemental appropriation for Job and Family Services.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Uh the transfer of funds are quarterly transfers that we are required to do within our our state system, and the supplemental appropriations is within our Family Children First Council so that we can, we're actually had something paid in uh to the wrong account number, and we're going to transfer it over.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-41, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Resolution number 25-42, in the matter of approving a service agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and Innovative Hardware Incorporated, doing business as EPS, for the installation of security cameras for various Delaware County EMS stations.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Jeff Fischel, Delaware County EMS. Uh the agreement in front of you is uh exactly for what Jen said. It's for uh station security cameras. Um I'm here to answer any questions you might have about them.
I'm just happy they're going up.
Thank you.
Vote, please. No comment.
Vote on motion 25-42, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Resolution number 25-43, in the matter of approving the request for proposals for the provision of occupational health and wellness services for employees and employment candidates of Delaware County Emergency Medical Services.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Uh morning, this is a request for proposals for uh different vendors to provide onsite uh exercise physiologists, onsite dietitian services, um which has been a integral part of our operation since 2019. It's done great to improve the health and fitness of our staff, reduce uh work comp injuries, and uh looking for your approval to go out uh for RFP.
Great. And they're able to do this then when they're on duty sometimes?
Yes, so not only is this uh built into our uh contract that they have to be tested yearly for in physical fitness, it's also one of our standard operating guidelines that they have to have a minimum of forty-five minutes of working out while on duty, and it is mandated that one of the exercise physiologists are at their station that they participate in it.
Ah, great. Thank you. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-43, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-44, a resolution of necessity for purchase or lease of motor vehicles for the use of the Delaware County Regional Sewer District.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Justin Navi, Director of Finance. Uh this request has been submitted for the approval of three vehicle leases for regional sewer, including one SUV and two pickup trucks.
Okay. Any comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-44, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-45, in the matter of approving an agreement with Samusar Incorporated for the purchase of Samusar hardware and use of software as a service for GPS monitoring for the Delaware County Regional Sewer District.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Eric McPeak, Deputy Director of Operations with the Regional Sewer District. This contract is for uh GPS tracking devices for our various vehicles in our fleet, not only passenger vehicles, semi-trucks, tractor trailers, unpowered trailers, and our uh remote generators. I can answer any questions you might have.
Do they have any now? I mean, any GPS?
They do not.
They do not?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, for us, it's a logistics uh primarily. It'll also help a lot with safety, just having these trackers in there, and then certainly during the moments when we're, whether it's bad weather or something that causes our remote generators to go out, um we'll be able to monitor fuel remotely, which we haven't had been able to do before.
Oh, good, good.
Make sure we have continuity of service and just a lot of positives.
Sure. Oh, great. Thank you. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-45, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Thanks, Eric.
Resolution number 25-46, in the matter of approving a joint application by the prosecuting attorney and the Board of County Commissioners to the Common Pleas Court to authorize the appointment of legal counsel to assist the county treasurer.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning. Eric Coestetler, General Counsel. This resolution would approve a joint application together with the prosecuting attorney to the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of outside legal counsel for the county treasurer. As you are aware, this request is the subject of pending litigation filed by the treasurer. And upon review of the information filed in that pending litigation, the prosecuting attorney has submitted this joint application for your consideration. I have reviewed the joint application, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-46, Mr. Merrill.
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
That brings us to administrator reports.
Tracy Davies Administrator, uh the only comment I have is I'm, as a proud graduate of the Ohio State University, I just want to say congratulations to the Buckeyes for their national championship win and go Bucks.
Oh, gosh, yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Commissioner Merrill.